Regular meeting of the Corvillo City Council to order on January 12th, 2021. As has been the case for almost a year now, we're doing it via Zoom, or at least a number of months via Zoom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Foster. Gross? He's here. Win?
Yeah.
Dobbs?
Here.
Goodrich?
Here.
Okay, did I hear Mitch? Did he?
Yes, Mitch is here.
Okay, so all council members except for Megan?
Oh, that's Megan.
Megan's here now.
Oh, good. Thank you.
That would help. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Okay. All council members are present, as is the mayor, city clerk, city administrator, and several other city staff. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda.
Okay, moved by Goodrich, seconded by by Gross. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the agenda is approved. Item four is the time on our agenda for citizen comments. Anyone from the audience that would like to speak to us about an item that's not already on the agenda? Do we know of anyone tonight?
We don't have anyone for public comments or any written comments tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Then let's move on to a presentation that I've been very much looking forward to about a absolutely terrific program slash project that will be starting very shortly in Johnson County. And it's involved Corvill and all the other surrounding, most of the, all the other surrounding communities. Matt Miller is with us tonight, and the new director, Abby, is also, I'll let, I'll let Matt introduce Abby a little further. But it's the GuideLink Center that has, as I said, been into works for a number, for a long time now. And I want to thank, on the city council, Lori Goodrich has been our point person to sit on their policy board over the last several months. It's helped guide that. So thank you, Lori, for that. And unless the city council, or at least Lori, let's say, or Kelly has anything further to say, I'd like to introduce Matt Miller.
All right, thank you, John. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys, for having us tonight. I'm pleased to give you an update on where we're at with everything, and the great news is that the building is complete. We got, we passed inspections and got the certificate of occupancy last week. So we're now busily trying to get moved in and go through punch list items, things like that. Our furniture is going to be, start arriving next week. We have staff then that will be starting shortly thereafter, going through workflows and things like that. And we have, hope to have some sort of a soft opening toward the start of February. And when I say soft opening, what we're thinking is notifying law enforcement that we're ready to accept some clients, but not necessarily announcing it to the public. That'll allow us to have a lower volume of folks coming in as we're working through our workflows, making sure everything is kind of going how we expect it to go. And then we'll kind of do more of a announcement of a grand opening a little bit after that. We don't expect it to be a long period of time that we have this soft opening, but we just want to work through some folks before we open it up to walk-ins. So that's where we currently sit. One other thing before I introduce Abby is I definitely would like to invite you guys to come take a tour. Clearly with COVID, we're doing things a little differently. We're not having one giant grand opening where everyone will attend, but we'll find some times that suit for folks to come through, and we can kind of stay socially distanced in a little bit smaller group. So I'll extend that invite. Maybe I can work with Kelly or whomever you would like on finding some times that would work for you guys. But we'd love to have you come take a tour of the building. And with that said, I see my daughter walking in, so now is probably a good time to throw it over to Abby. Abby's our new executive director.
Hello, everybody. I see some familiar names on here and faces. I'm happy to meet everyone else. I just have to laugh at Matt a little bit because that's happened to me before when I've been on a meeting, so I completely understand. So I'm Abby Forenzy. I'm actually a licensed mental health counselor, but I've been with community programs for the past 15 years or so, and I've worked at the Abby Mental Health Center. Just happen to have the same name as the center for the past six years in both Cedar Rapids and in Iowa City. So my background is in community mental health, crisis services, as well as, I haven't provided direct substance use services, but have worked with other providers and worked with clients who needed many different services, included substance use services. So I'm really happy to have the opportunity to be the executive director of this project. I've heard about it long before they hired me, and it's one of those things that I, I think as you all are very happy to see finally come to fruition. And, you know, just really looking forward to making it a success for our clients, their family members, the community as a whole. Really excited to be on board.
I'll mention, I think one of the things you guys asked us to touch on was how we plan to work with law enforcement. We had Corleville Police Chief and a couple other folks come through about a month ago, actually, and did a little tour when we were wrapping up construction. We talked, talked to them at the time about, you know, how, how we expected the drop-off process to go, and really just about keeping an open line of communication. Certainly, the drop-off procedures that we have at, at the start might change as we get going and find out what works and what doesn't work. So I think everybody's in agreement that we're definitely going to be flexible upfront. And, and if there's any issues, we plan to address them right away. So with that being said, did, did you guys have any specific questions for us about how anything was going to function?
Matt, I think one thing, if you could just outline for everybody all the different services, because you have several different things that will be happening there. So I think it'd be good just to outline all of the different things that people will be able to get services there for.
Absolutely. I sent, I sent a presentation. Now might be a good time. Do you guys want to pull that up, or, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what your functionality here, but there it is. Perfect. Yeah, if you want to go to that first slide, that, that's kind of a summary of what all of our services are. The first thing I'll call out is you'll notice I've got a couple of things in red lettering there. The reason I'm saying that is plus is because those are things that we're doing at our access center that's actually above and beyond what the Iowa code says needs to be in an access center. So that's really what we had envisioned for our community back before the state ever even got involved. So that's what we've continued to go with. Everyone that arrives at GuideLink will go through an initial screening and assessment. That's primarily going to be done by someone from the Community Mobile Crisis Team. They've actually hired full-time staff that will always have someone available there at GuideLink that can do that initial screening. And that just goes through, you know, like a suicide risk assessment, some standard questions, just to kind of figure out where we think they need to go. From there, obviously, we'll, we'll get them into the next level of care then, whatever that may be, whether it's on the substance abuse side or the mental health side of things. They can go into crisis observation or crisis stabilization on the behavioral health side of things. Um, I would say for the layperson, the biggest difference there is just the length of time that you're there. Crisis observation are for those folks who are discharged prior to being there 24 hours. Crisis stabilization is if you're there two to five days. There are some things that they do a little differently based on if you're in stabilization or observation, but essentially it's that, that time that's the easiest way to remember the difference. Also, if, if someone is in crisis stabilization for five days and it's still clear that they need additional assistance, we will have, we have a subacute affiliation with Penn Center, so we can send them there. That's off-site, that's not at GuideLink, but they can stay for there up to 10 days and actually re-up that for, I think, several 10-day periods. So just to kind of reiterate, we, we view ourselves as a behavioral health and substance abuse urgent care clinic. So the goal is to get someone stabilized and then either return to their home or connected with other resources as quickly as possible. So really, most folks are going to be in and out of there within five days.
On the Hey, Matt, can I interrupt and ask if we're going to be able to get a copy of this? I just wondered how good a notes I need to take of what you're saying, or if we can get a copy of your
I sent it to John, so I
Okay.
Not John Lundell, but the other, whoever the other John is.
Not him, super.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine. On the substance abuse side of things, we will have detox. Basically, somebody goes through that before entering a longer-term treatment. And then we have a sobering unit. That's a little bit different. Okay, that's a little bit different. It's, it's a jail diversion program, essentially. Basically, folks can go there and sober up without having to get a criminal record. Clearly, we expect folks to kind of, this is kind of, the way I think of it is folks that are just there for a one-time deal. They're not really a threat to themselves or others. We don't really expect them to be showing up multiple times. If someone does get dropped off there multiple times, that's when I think when we would approach them about additional services, whether they would benefit from detox, whether there is a behavioral health issue that's going on, that they would benefit from some treatment there. So we'll definitely encourage additional things above and beyond that if someone sober, if someone's showing up for sobering more than once. I think more than likely, the easiest example of this we think of, though, would just be like a college student who has a little too much fun one night and we never see him again, and that's fine. If that keeps, keeps a criminal thing off their record, that's, that's kind of the goal there. We'll also hopefully be able to keep people from having to go to the emergency room by administering some minor medical first aid. When I say minor, think of kind of like the same care you could get at Kinnick Stadium on a game day. That's that type of very limited, just kind of like dressing a wound, applying an ice pack type of thing. We also will have telehealth services, a connection with University of Iowa Emergency Room though, so we can consult with them. If there's any question about whether someone should be there or not, whether they should be at the hospital, or whether we're good enough, good to care for them, we'll have that capability. And then once again, when we discharge someone, everybody's going to have like a discharge plan. So that patient-centered treatment planning, we want to make sure they have a plan for after they leave, too. The real goal is to kind of break the cycle of them going to the emergency room, going to jail, going to emergency room, going to jail, to kind of get them connected with some longer-term treatments, some, so hopefully they're not in that revolving door. But if they are, obviously, we'll continue to help them, but the goal is to try to break that as much as possible. If you want to go to the next slide.
Hey, Matt, is there a length of time maximum for the detox side of things?
That's a good question. I think most folks are out of there within like five days. I think any longer than that, it's considered like rehab, so it's kind of a different type of care. So they would actually go over to Prelude if they had to be there for any longer than that. But Prelude, as you can see on this slide, Prelude is our service provider on the substance abuse side of things. They're actually moving their entire detox program into GuideLink. So all the detox that they're doing will be handled there, and then any additional services that people need, they can actually go over to Prelude then, which we're actually located very, very close. So that's kind of an ideal location where we're at. Um, a couple of things that I like to point out here is the Mobile Crisis Outreach Team, the one from Community, they are, their, their new permanent home is going to be in the GuideLink Center. That program will continue to function as it normally does, where they're dispatched out to meet with people wherever a behavioral health issue is occurring. So they go to people's homes a lot. They can meet people in public. The nice thing about having them located there, though, is when they are not dispatched out, if we need an extra hand, they can provide that extra hand. And as I mentioned, they're also hiring someone, actually for people, to make sure that 24/7, they have someone that can help us do intake at all times that won't get dispatched out. So they'll, kind of like a permanent GuideLink employee. The other thing to mention is the winter shelter, which is administered by Shelter House. They are in their new permanent home now. I think many of you know, this had been going in the old Carquest Building across the street from the Johnson County Administration Building. As of last night, they moved into the new facility that's on the, on the edge of our building. So they will be co-located with us, once again, totally separate programs. But I think a lot of the people that utilized the Low Barrier Winter Shelter also may benefit from our services. So I think it's great that we're kind of co-located there. The staff for this entire thing, maybe this is a good time to go to the next slide, just to talk you through it. It's a little bit better visual of the staff that's going to be providing services there. So this is kind of our org chart, so to speak. Johnson County is really the, the final administrator of this whole thing, as they are basically the financial backstop along with the East Central Mental Health Region. We're forming an advisory board, so we always have a close connection with elected officials, law enforcement, other providers in the area, just to make sure that we're continually improving and we're all working together the best that we can. Abby Health has been hired then as that managing entity. That's where, obviously, Abby Forenzy comes in as our executive director. They're also providing a medical director and some other staff positions like custodians, kitchen staff, things like that. The actual entities providing the services then, and then also doing their billing, and they're the ones with the licensure and the accreditation to provide these services. We have Prelude, as I mentioned, on the behavioral health side of things, Community Mobile Crisis to do our initial triage. Penn Center is going to be the ones managing the crisis observation and crisis stabilization units. And then Abby Community Mental Health Clinic will have MDs and ARMPs. So basically, those prescriber-level folks that can come in and meet with people, get their medications changed up, get their prescriptions refilled, things like that. So they're the professional services side of things. And then I show here on the org chart how we have some other people providing services there as well. Johnson County Ambulance Service is actually going to staff a paramedic there 24/7. They'll do things such as monitor the sobering unit, because obviously there's a risk there if something goes south of medical risk. So they'll be monitoring that. They'll also be available to help us with some of that minor medical first aid. They consult, can, can consult with the RNs about medical issues and just really lend a hand throughout the center. Same thing with the University of Iowa College of Nursing. They are actually contracting with Abby Community Mental Health to provide an ARMP that'll be available for 12 hours per week to help, help at that prescriber level. So that's really our structure and the services that are offered. Sorry, I kind of threw a lot at you real quickly. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Matt? Would you be able to talk about insurance coverage? Would that be a good time that there is insurance coverage?
Yeah, as far as how is this all going to be paid for? Yeah, um, so from an insurance standpoint, as I mentioned, all of these service providers that are going to be at GuideLink, they are all currently in operation. So the nice thing is, is we'll just, they're going to continue billing like they normally would. They all have their own tax ID. So I guess to, to a patient, when they're coming in for services, everything's going to appear transparent. We're all on the GuideLink front, so everybody will appear to be a GuideLink employee. On the backend, I guess, is where it might get a little confusing, because they could technically see three different people. They could see the Mobile Crisis Person, they could see a Prelude Person, they could see a Penn Center Person. All three of those theoretically could bill separately for that. So, and they'll build their own insurances under their own contracts that they currently have.
And just, just to add something, so people will not be turned away for inability to pay. For instance, if they didn't have insurance, you know, we would work with them or try to figure something out. And the other thing is with the sobering unit, that area doesn't require that they provide insurance to receive sobering services. Right, Matt? I mean, that's my, yeah, so, because something, a question that we had got is that some people were worried that if, you know, they might have the choice whether or not to go to jail or to go to the sobering unit, and we would hope they pick the sobering unit, but sometimes people are worried that their parents might get a bill, like college students, so that the sobering unit, we would not be requiring proof of insurance. But like Matt was saying, the other services there would kind of be business as usual. We would, you know, bill insurance as appropriate.
And Abby, it's a quick question or thought. You know, one of the things I'm curious about and hopeful for is that GuideLink will kind of take some pressure off of police dealing with mental health issues, and, and, you know, we've talked about trying to reallocate resources so that the police aren't constantly doing non-policing calls. Can you speak to that? And then is there a way, a mechanism that data will be collected so that we can showcase that this level of those types of calls are reduced that helped out the police because of GuideLink?
Sure. So lots of conversations took place between Matt and the other committee members before I came on board in October. But since I have been involved, I've had a lot of meetings with various law enforcement individuals and officers, and Matt has introduced me to a lot of people. And I have come to understand how important this is to them and what the intent is with the GuideLink Center in regards to doing exactly what you're saying with helping law enforcement. And I honestly, I've had a lot of good conversations. I think they're feeling really positive about it. And that is absolutely one of the things that we're trying to do is to not only divert people from having to go to jail unnecessarily if they could be better served elsewhere, but also to support law enforcement, you know, when they, they might call ahead of time, and they might talk to someone like me on the phone or one of our psych techs and say, hey, I've got this person, and this is what's going on, what can we, you know, can we bring them in, and kind of work through that with us. That's, we really want to keep an open line of communication with law enforcement. I know I've made that clear. Every time I talk to them, I'm like, please, if there's anything you see, here's my cell. You know, I honestly plan for those phone calls or updates and emails, because I think there, there will be a lot to figure out. And I've told, I've told them, I, I know this isn't going to be perfect right off the start, but I think it's going to be better, and we're just going to get better and better as we go along. And as long as we keep that open line of communication, it, I just think there's, I think it's just going to be better and be helpful for everyone. So yes, definitely on my mind, for sure.
Hey, just one, one additional thing on that. Per our 28E funding agreement with you guys, we're required to provide certain data metrics. So those will include the number of visits, the number of walk-in visits, the number of law enforcement drop-offs by city, the number of visits to each service area, so whether it's crisis ops or detox or whatever. We'll keep track of the number of visitors returning within 72 hours of previous discharge. We'll keep track of the number of unduplicated visitors for that month, the number of discharges overall, the officer wait time and minutes for each law enforcement drop-off, the number of routine and emergency dispatches to the center. So if we have anything that goes on that requires us to call law enforcement to come in and help, we'll keep track of that. And then also separately, a number of times law enforcement is called back to the center with their drop-off. So those are all metrics that we agree to in the funding agreement that we plan on providing, in addition to all of our other normal performance metrics that will be available to anyone as well.
And one of the things we discussed with law enforcement was, for instance, an outcome measure we're looking at is reducing the amount of time when they bring someone in that they need to be there to eventually having it, you know, around 15 minutes, like that's a goal. At first, we might take a little longer with the screening as we're working through some of the kinks. The last thing we want to do is screen someone and say we can take them and then have to call law enforcement back 20 minutes later. So we're trying to make sure that we work with them to have a good screening process and reduce that amount of time that they need to be there.
I have a question, just for clarification, clarification sake. You are not serving juveniles, correct? It's just folks that are 18 and above?
Adults, yes.
Okay. The other question I had is about your COVID protocols. Can you talk a little bit about some of the, the safety measures you either have in place or you're, you're planning to put in place as you open?
Sure. Matt, do you want me to take that one, or do you want to talk about it?
Go for it.
Go for it, okay. So luckily, through some of the CARES Act dollars, we have been able to obtain a lot of PPE. Some of the PPE you would imagine, you know, hand sanitizers, masks, all those types of things, but also some tools that we're going to use, laptops, telehealth carts, those types of things to where if someone does present, you know, and either, you know, has some symptoms or something like that, we don't just have to say no, you need to turn and walk out the door and go to the ER. But we do have temperature screenings when people walk through the door. We ask all the questions. All staff will be utilizing PPE, kind of standard protocols that most of the providers we're working with have already been doing, so they can see people presenting in a crisis situation. We are not, I did have to, I have to clarify with people, we are not, we don't have the capacity to be or operate a COVID unit to where if someone is positive and, you know, is test positive for COVID or has significant symptoms, we won't be able to handle that right off, I mean, right away. Not only, and at first, I got to tell you, the medical director and myself and many of the providers, they want to be able to serve as many people as possible. We're leaning more on the side of if we use the safety precautions, we should be able to see a lot of people. But what we were told as well, though, is other people in the crisis observation stabilization unit or detox. You know, we also have to consider them as well. There's a lot of other people staying there besides just the staff. So I think we've put some good protocols in place. I know our medical director has been consulting, I mean, he's, or right now, they're from the University of Iowa, UIHC, consulting with their, you know, ER urgent care type centers, so we can utilize similar protocols. Where, and that's, again, people keep asking, you know, if we're ready to open during a pandemic, and we're like, this is the time we need to open, because less people need to be in the ER.
And, and you will, will you serve patients or from other counties, or is it just Johnson County?
Well, so, go ahead. Yeah.
The short, that's the short answer.
Short answer. We're in, I mean, we're anticipating traffic mostly from Johnson County and the East Central Region, but we, again, we would not turn someone away if they came from a different county.
I have a quick question. The data that Matt mentioned earlier that is being collected, is it going to be reported to each city annually, or is it available for request only?
We'll provide that monthly at the advisory board meetings.
Thank you.
Matt, I just want to congratulate you on this project. You have done a wonderful job in coordinating and managing all these different entities and keeping the building process on task and everything. And I think we can just really celebrate right now that we're at this point. And Abby, I just so look forward to you being the operations manager. You're doing a great job already. And I'm really excited about the future for the GuideLink Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. We appreciate you guys' support as well, and I hope you all, you're all still this happy a month from now when we open.
No, thank you both for your presentation. And as I said in the introduction, I just think this is a huge step forward for this area in terms of additional services being offered, people who really need it, and getting them the right services, the appropriate fit. So it's so, so exciting. And unfortunately, it's like so many other things that open up right now. You can't quite have the big open house, as you mentioned, but that's okay. It's more important that it opened quietly and starts serving the folks that it's intended to serve. So I look forward, Matt, I've met you, Abby, I haven't met you before, but someday that day will come, and we'll probably have a mask on, but I look forward to meeting you.
Look forward to it, too.
Any other questions from anybody on the, on the Zoom? Okay, we'll be in touch, I'm sure, and look forward to it.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys, so much. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move forward then to item number six, which is the Iowa River Landing Parking Lot 2021 project that will construct a 141-stall parking lot for use by the adjacent Stabridge Suite Hotel and the top-floor condominiums. Bids for this are due on January 19th. So item A is a public hearing on the plans, specifications, estimate of cost, form of contract, and ordering bids, and setting the date for receiving those bids. So I would like to open the public hearing and ask if there are any comments on this parking lot expansion project.
There's no public or written comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'll close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the plans, specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract for the Iowa River Landing Parking Lot 2021, introduced and adopted by Councilmember Foster, seconded by
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion? Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item seven is a community development block grant program. It's a public hearing and a presentation for the review of the status of funded activities for student support in the NESTS programs during hybrid learning in the Iowa City Community School District. So item A is a presentation of the status of these funded activities.
Mr. Mayor, I have a number of items I need to read into the public record for this CDBD grant for our NESTS programs here in Corleville. So the need for the CDBG project is that several schools in Corleville have a free and reduced lunch rate as high as 80%. This grant funding provides scholarships for eligible students to attend an all-day school-age care program that guides participants with their schoolwork during hybrid or 100% online learning, along with enrichment activities. The grant also covers expenses for small neighborhood programs for social, emotional and recreational focused after-school activities. The description of the CDBG funded project and activities is to provide scholarships for up to 25 children in K through sixth grade for participation in an all-day program through Corleville Parks and Recreation during the COVID pandemic. The program provides online school support and enrichment activities and takes place from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. The project also provides after-school programs to part, to support social, emotional and recreational well-being during the pandemic. The amount of CDBG funds for the project is $38,736. And the estimated amount of CDBG assistance that benefits low and moderate income persons is the entire amount of $38,736. The location of the project activities, the full-day programs are held at the Corleville Rec Center and Community of Christ. The after-school programs may be held at the Corleville Public Library or at Corleville churches located in neighborhoods where desired enrollment population lives. There is no relocation that would have to take place as a result of this CDBG project. The city or county contact information for residents to contact with concerns or complaints regarding this project is myself, Sherry Proud, Director of Parks and Recreation, for further information. And my contact information is 319-248-1750 or at sprout@corleville.org. The community development housing needs of low or moderate persons in the city and any planned or potential activities to address these needs are if members of the public have input on this item, to please share those during the public hearing or contact City Clerk Thor Johnson at 319-248-1700 or tjohnson@corleville.org. And the comments will be included in the minutes. Other community development and housing needs and any planned or potential activities to address those needs, again, if members of the public have input on this item, please share those during the public hearing or contact City Clerk Thor Johnson at 319-248-1700 or tjohnson@corleville.org. And those comments will be included in the minutes. A report, just for everyone to know, we are, we have tried, this, this grant information or grant application was done in September. The award began September 9th. We did try to run the after-school programs portions of this and did not get enough students to participate in that part of the program. But we do have two full-day, all-day programs that run from 7:30 to 5:30, one at Corleville Rec Center and one at Community of Christ. And we are up to 81 kids that are participating in those across the two sites. And we currently have 20 scholarship spots filled out of those 81 that are fulfilling 90% of those children's cost to participate.
Okay. Thank you. Sherry Proud, Director of Parks and Recreation. We'll move on into item B, which is a public hearing on the program that Sherry just described. I'd like to open a public hearing. Are there any written or verbal comments?
There are no public or written comments.
Thank you very much. I'll close the public hearing. And that's the only action on that project. We'll move on to item eight, the Iowa River Landing District. This is a resolution to approve an agreement with Kappa Advisors LLC that covers the calendar year 2021, not to exceed $62,500 per month. Kappa has and will continue to provide leasing assistance, creation of design and sign standards, assistance facilitating the next IRL Parkview Building and supporting tenant and common area maintenance of the Iowa River Landing District. The resolution, please, Don?
Resolution approving an agreement with Kappa Advisors LLC for the Iowa River Landing District is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Any questions or comments?
I, yes, Mayor, I'd just like to report that we, you'll see the results of the work with Kappa over the next month in that there will be four different leases that we're in the process of being signed and implemented. And so they do both the work with the leases and then they help us get to the point where the leasehold improvements are also put into place. And then they also help us with the overall operations, both from a marketing and just daily operations as well. They have been doing a good job of trying to get this all into a place so that hopefully by the end of this year, they've worked themselves out of a job so that our consultants will be able to, that are working on the day-to-day activities will be able to take over and that they'll have been thoroughly trained and will have all of the reports developed that are necessary for the ongoing operation. So that's our overall goal. And I appreciate their willingness to work with us on that particular goal so that this is not a never-ending contract with them. And I am looking forward to the next month and a half when we can start implementing several of the leases that they have completed for us. And considering that we're in the middle of a pandemic, it is quite frankly amazing that we have that many leases that will be assigned and moving forward.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other comments? Roll call.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item B under this item is a considered resolution for approving a licensing agreement with Deacon Sports and Entertainment, the owners of the arena hockey team, to develop an amphitheater, an entertainment venue in the riverfront park area of the Iowa River Landing. Another super exciting project. Don, the resolution, please.
Resolution approving a license agreement with Deacon Sports and Entertainment to develop an amphitheater theater entertainment venue in the Iowa River Landing District, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Wynn, seconded by.
Second.
I believe that was Gross that jumped in there first, seconded by Gross. Any comments or discussion on this item?
Yes, I'd just like to, this is part of what we'll discuss later in the exciting news today. But it is the intent of Deacon Sports and Entertainment to work with our Park and Recreation Department and our Park and Recreation Commission in regards to the development of this along the Iowa River. Because 95% of the time, this land and area will be open to the public for, as a public open space. And they will be doing the work of having some concerts as part of this overall operations. This is something that we had looked, had in the master plan for some time. And this provides a way for financing those improvements and having a partner that would be able to, to actually build and work with us on those improvements that would not be at a cost to the city. So that's the good news of this partnership.
Great. Thank you, Kelly. Anything else? Roll call.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Okay. Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item nine is the boards and commission appointments. I would entertain a motion to concur with my recommendations for the following appointments. For the Civil Service Commission, reappoint Josh Schomburger of Corleville for a term ending in December of 2024. For the Board of Adjustment, appoint Carla Praska of Corleville to a term ending in December of 2021. And to the Corleville Public Library Board of Trustees, reappoint Amanda Elkins for, of Corleville for a term ending in 2026. These are all December. Reappoint Deborah Long Hatz for a term ending in December of 2024. And finally, appoint Robert Turnquist to a term and ending in 2026. Is there a motion for that?
Tom, ma'am.
Moved by Dodds. I'm sorry, who seconded?
I think Lori did.
Lori did? Oh, thank you. I didn't catch that. Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion?
Um, yeah. Go ahead, Lori.
I want to thank those who are being reappointed and especially thank those who filled out an application and have been appointed to new positions.
Do you?
Yeah, I was just curious about a couple of things. First, how will the, the Civil Service Commission? Or how will our new Police Citizens Review Board impact the Civil Service Commission? I know that they, they kind of do, will be doing separate things. But I'm just curious, you know, if there will be any, any overlap in, in either communication or, or the, the types of duties that, that those two entities will perform?
Well, I'll let this, let Kelly respond specifically, but I'm sure that there will be some, since the, since the police review board is so new and their operating procedures and so forth aren't developed yet, that'll be a consideration that will be taken into, into carefully about the overlap and what's appropriate, what's not appropriate for overlap with the Civil Service Commission. But Kelly might be able to be more specific than me.
Yeah. And the Civil Service Commission has very specific role, list of duties in the Iowa code that outlines what their responsibilities are. First and foremost is to, they are the ones that formally develop and approve a list of individuals to be for, that can be hired in the police department, in our particular case, not in, in the fire department, which is in some locations. And so both, that covers new hires, but it also covers promotions as well. And so recently, they had a process that they, where they approved the process to begin with, and then they approved the list at the end of, of that process. For, we had promotions for sergeant and for lieutenant. And then we also have had two in the last three to four months. We've had two processes for the hiring of new individuals. So that is first and foremost of their activities. The second thing that the Civil Service Commission is responsible for is, would be appeals of any discipline would go to that commission that an employee in the police department could appeal the, their supervisor's discipline, disciplinary activity or actions. And so that would be specifically provided for in the code, the civil service. In our particular case, since the police department is also unionized, that the actual individual has the right, the staff employee has the right to decide whether they go to the, they want to appeal to the Civil Service Commission or whether they want to go under the union contract. And so they have that option and there's two separate directions that they can have. So that is the primary activities of the Civil Service Commission. Our newest board will be looking more at training and that the police department provides. They will also be looking at any helping individuals in regards to complaints and filing those complaints and that whole process. And then also another primary one is the whole gathering of data from the department in regards to everything from arrest information. There's a whole host of information and data that they will not only be responsible for designating what information, but then also reviewing the annual reports that will come out of that. So that's kind of the two different distinctions between our newest commission and the civil service.
And then when will we be able to start recruiting for the Police Citizens Review Board?
That we should be able to start in January, in this month. And the, we will get all that information out to all of you so you can hopefully help recruit people for those positions. Along with, there's two positions that will notify the individual entities that need to make a recommendation as well.
So Kelly, so perhaps the staff could draft up that solicitation and description of, of who we're looking for and share that at the next work session. And we should, we should discuss that before we put it out to the public.
Yep. Definitely, we can do that. But I would say that, you know, this takes, to get a diverse applicant pool, it does take personal contacts with individuals. And I mean, these things don't just happen. And so I would encourage people that if you know somebody that you think would be good, you know, please, once we get this information put together, please take the initiative to contact individuals and suggest that they might want to consider applying.
Most definitely. Anything else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion now to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor, I'd like the council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar, a through our inclusive.
Okay. Moved by Dodds, seconded by.
Second.
By Quinn. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Okay, the consent calendars approved, all ayes. Item 11 is the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Several things to report tonight. First of all, I would just like to make sure that the council, mayor have seen the notice from Mike Funky. We will be celebrating Martin Luther King next Monday by having a special luncheon learned for all of our staff and you are all invited as well. And our speaker that day will be Dr. Benny Hawkins. And if, if you've not met Benny, I can tell you, you're in for a great treat because Benny has lived in our community for many years. And Benny grew up in the South and he has a very interesting story on some of the things that he has faced personally over his life in regards to discrimination. And he has a very interesting personal story that he'll be sharing there. Also Benny had the, he graduated from the same college as Martin Luther King, four years behind Dr. King with, he attended the first year with Dr. King's younger brother. And so he's got some good stories from that as well. So just looking forward to next Monday and being able to celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Day with Benny Hawkins. We had great news today that the ECHL League approved a franchise, a team franchise for Corleville for a new hockey team. And so the hockey team will be, the owners will be Dean McDonald and Deacon Sports and Entertainment. They are looking forward to getting things going here and they will have a team up and running for next October will be the start of their season here in Corleville. And so that was unanimously approved by the ECLH L League and would just like to thank the commissioner of the ECLH League because he's worked with us for almost two years now and getting this whole process put together. And I think it's going to be a great addition in Corleville. Finally, I'd just like to remind our citizens that we are in the budget time and the budget cycle and process. And so just encourage people, if they have questions, thoughts or comments, now is the time to get those, get those to us because. or comments, now is the time to get those get those to us. Because a lot of things, times people make requests, and it has something to do with financing or a budget. And now, even though it doesn't start until next July, now is the time when those decisions have to be made. So just encourage people to get comments to the mayor, council members, or you can call City Hall as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Kelly, because I've received questions, could you just briefly tell the folks about the as far as naming the hockey team and that process?
Sure. They the hockey team has will start a naming process tomorrow, and they are having a public contest. And they are doing that in conjunction with KCRG TV. And so you can suggest the name for the team, and they will be making a decision on the name of the team and also the mascot by mid-February, February 15. They have to have this turned into ECHL so that they will have their jerseys and everything ready for the next season. So encourage people to come up with those great names that if you've got, we've got a lot of creative people right here on this Zoom. So Megan and Nick, you can go to work and others as well and come up with the new name for the Corvail Hockey Team. And they do have some great prizes for the if they select your particular name.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions for Kelly? Okay, moving on to item 12, the mayor's report. Well, I'd just like to say that, you know, this is our first meeting of 2021. You know, it's it's while we all were looking forward, I think, to 2021, the incidents of last week in Washington DC were absolutely horrible and inexcusable. And and our country is certainly more divided than it's ever been that I I can recall. So there there are still many, many challenges, very serious challenges facing us. But there's a lot of good things, too. And, you know, I think we can't lose track of, you know, at the federal level, we'll have a new president on board within 10 days or so. The COVID vaccination is is rolling out, not nearly as fast as we'd like, but nevertheless, it is. But I think what I'd like to just, you know, highlight is some of the things that here at the local level that really, you know, that that we have some control over. And, you know, first of all, I got to start with the great city council that I have to work with. All five of you are are just such dedicated, honest, focused, hardworking friends that are all united to make Corvail a better place. And that really is great. And then, of course, we're supported by an equally superb staff. And we never give enough kudos out to the staff from top to bottom that that make our job easier and implemented the decisions that the council makes. So that's great. And then, you know, so many good things in Corvail. We've got continued economic growth, growth that's that many communities, unfortunately, this state aren't aren't experiencing, whether that's housing projects, new subdivisions, you know, new programs that we're a part of, like we heard from tonight on the the guide link, the amphitheater that we heard about tonight, the hockey team that we just talked about. You know, the arena and fieldhouse will be opening up more fully soon. There's just a great deal of things that we can be very proud of and very excited for. That's going to be only better in the in the months to come. Now, that's not to say that we don't have challenges, too, but like every community does. You know, decisions that are made at the federal, and I would say especially the state level, are always concerning how they might impact city governance in a community like Corvail. We still have to address the COVID pandemic, take it very seriously until it's to a point where we can begin to relax, certainly not yet. And then the continue to focus on the Black Lives Matters concerns and priorities that we've established. We've come a ways, we got a long ways to go, but we've got, you know, we've got some of our route mapped out, I think, with the with the new community policing and some of the other programs that we've talked about continuing to work on. So with that said, I just wanted to say I look forward to working with all of you. And and I think it's going to be a good year. The second thing I was going to mention, and and as I say also, this I have to do this far too often, and that is send out condolences to to family members of persons who have loved ones who have passed away that have connections to our fine city. And and this week, I was sat and reading the paper, the obituary for Tim Slade. You know, Tim's parents were Russell and Dolores Slade. Russell was a longtime fire chief of the Corvail Fire Department. He actually recruited and hired me to be a member of the Fire Department back in 1980. And then, of course, his wife and Tim's mom, Dolores, continues to live on 13th Avenue here in Corvail, and always a strong volunteer on the Fourth Fest and other activities, and very concerned about our school system and always providing input on that. So our condolences go out to the Slade family for their loss of their son, Tim, this week. And that's it for me. I'll pass it over to Don if he if he can speak without coughing here.
I have nothing new to cough about, Kevin.
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. Committee and council members report. Mitch, would you like to start us off tonight?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. And and I echo a lot of what you said, and I've just got a few comments to make. But regarding our library report, we are actually meeting tomorrow. So I at the following meeting, I'll give you a full report on that one. And I, you know, I share, I think, your concerns and hopes of the new year. I, you know, I think, I, to be honest, I debated on what to say and to what extent should I speak about the events of last Wednesday and went back and forth. And I think I'm just going to say this, because I think too often silence doesn't help situations. From a personal level, you know, in the late 90s, I worked in that building, in the Capitol Building. And it was very disturbing watching staffers flee and run and just, you know, it was triggering and traumatic. And, you know, and I've kind of gone through a lot of emotions. And I think, you know, there's definite anger from from aspects. I, you know, when I consider our leaders in this state, I consider Senator Grassley and Senator Ernst and Governor Reynolds to be, you know, our elected leaders that represent our state. And I can't help but say I'm disappointed in their leadership on this issue, the fact that, you know, and even December 14, our senators wouldn't congratulate and and admit to and and, you know, just say that who the president was. And the fact that we had two months of innuendos of 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 election fraud and this or that, that just perpetuated and allowed a lot of what to happen, happened, in my opinion, last Wednesday. But I think what was most disappointing was even after the fact of last Wednesday, when Governor Reynolds says, quote, "When you have half the electorate who feels something is not valid, that's a threat to our republic to our republic." And I just find that comment just so disturbing in so many ways that we can't even after the fact say, you know, what actually happened. And and so as I was pretty upset and processing things, I am also reminded, and I think what brought me down a little bit are the words of Dr. King, as we celebrate his birthday this week. And he says, quote, "We are now faced with the fact that tomorrow is today. We are confronted with the fierce urgency of now and this unfolding conundrum of life and history. There is such a thing as being too late." And I think about that, and then I'm also reminded about Dr. King's comments that darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. So I'm, I'm going to use that as my mantra as I move on for 2021 and hope that, you know, as a community and as a state and as a country, we can start focusing less on the hate and more on the love and the commonality that binds us together. And I think this can take all of us to do it. I feel very confident here at the local level, we can, because I echo your sentiments, Mayor, that I feel this is one of the strongest, best councils since I've been on to work with. And I feel so fortunate to have that and look forward to what the year will bring. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mitch. Well put. Just going down the order in my screen here is, hi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I would like to give you all an update from the CCPA. I went to my second meeting for the Art Commission just last week, and I have some good news to report back in during COVID time, some positive news, which is good. So for the Christmas cabaret, it was a huge success. They were so worried, but they said for there was more than 400 computers watching the performance. So translate that into people, that is about 700 to 1,000 individual view in that program. So it was beyond anyone expectation, which is great. The CCPA end of year fundraising effort was the largest ever. They come up with the new mailing list and improve the process to reach over 4,000 supporter. And they surpassed the the budget that they had at 22,000. So they are thinking that by the end of the fundraiser, it should it should bring them to about $25,000, which is great. And then for the CARE Acts in December, the CCPA received $40,000 from that. It was allocated to art and cultural organization. And with the work of the staff, they were able to secure, you know, that that grant. And so that that helped tremendously. I know that they they have to follow some of their worker and, you know, this will help not only, you know, sustain though, be able to bring back the the worker, but also looking forward to 2021, be able to continue on, you know, doing some of the thing that they are hoping to do. For the performances that is going to take places at the CCPA, we are looking at maybe into the spring, hopefully in the spring, we'll be able to bring program back, you know, to our center. Depending on how COVID play out, you know, whether vaccine is being administered fast enough that those performing may have to be moved outside. And good weather is on us, on our side. So hopefully, we'll have, you know, art coming back into our community in the summer. Just like what Mitch and the mayor said earlier, you know, what has transpired last week had put me in in a mix of emotion. There was anger, there was disappointment, there was fear for me as a person of color. That fear is is, you know, amplify. It's 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 hard to put into words. I have lived in this community for, you know, 20 years, and never in my life I I would thought that, you know, this is something that I this fear that I would feel. And 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 this conversation that I have to have with my family, with my children, you know, to explain to them what was happening. It was so difficult, and it was so heartbreaking. At the same time, it was hard. And, you know, I came here as an immigrant from a country where we don't have the freedom that 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 the citizen here have. And sometime, I can't help but feel that, you know, the people here take their freedom lightly, you know, and I don't say that lightly, because I know what it feel like to live in a world where you don't have true freedom. And we do have it here, and sometime we take it for granted. You know, everybody is, you know, each person should to be able to have their own beliefs. But we should not bestow that belief on other people. We should not try to chain other people, you know, to to match our belief. And if they are not willing to chain, we bring harm to them. You know, I really hope that, you know, from what had happened last week could teach us a lesson that it doesn't matter how different we are. It doesn't matter, you know, we can all look different, but we can all work toward the same goal, where we can ensure that everybody have the same opportunity, can feel safe the same way regardless of how they look, where they come from. You know, we are, we, we, we are the greatest country in in the world, you know, the most powerful. But a lot of our action don't show that. You know, we need to be kinder to one another. And I really hope that in within our local community here, we can model that, each and every one of us. I am going to do that. I am going to embrace everybody regardless of how different they are from me. And I'm going to reason with them in order for them to see where I'm coming from and why I say the thing that I say, instead of lash out in anger and start calling name, because that really doesn't do any us any good. And I would like to ask all of you, you know, as leader in in leadership position, we need to model that. We need to walk the walk to not just talk the talk. And we need to be able to call out things that is not right. And that had to start with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Hi, for your your insights, your perspectives. Next on my screen is Lori.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of things. We might want to ask Ellen Hubble about the down payment assistance that was just announced. Five applications are available for families to buy a new house with the down payment assistance. Ellen, do you have a minute to talk?
Yes, thank you. I was just having a little trouble getting off mute. Or, yes, off mute. And thank you, Lori. Yes, through a grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority, the city of Corvail has down payment assistance available for up to five homeowners. And I wouldn't say it's first come, first served, because you do have to qualify through a number of through a process. But it is, you know, those that apply first will be those the first considered. And it is up to $25,000 in assistance. And the primary purpose of that is to fund up to 50% of a down payment that's required by a lender. And you can purchase a new home, an existing home, and the requirement is that you stay in the home for five years as your primary residence. It cannot be in the floodplain, it needs to be in Corvail. And you must meet some income guidelines. And for a four-person family in Corvail right now, that just means that your household income has to be under $78,500. And if you do stay in the home for five years, then the grant, the grant assistance is completely forgiven. You don't owe anything back. If you stay less than five years, you would just owe a portion back to the Iowa Economic Development Authority. So there's a lot more information on this on the Corvail website, www.corvail.org. And that will take you to an application questionnaire on the East Central Iowa Council of Governments website. EC Cog is administering this program for us. But we're really excited to have this opportunity to make available for people in Corvail who are looking for a new home to live in. We're all spending more time at home now, so it's a great time to to make sure that you love your space you're in.
Great.
Quick question on that. Sorry. Is it only for first time homeowner? Or is it available for all?
It is not only first time home buyers. As long as you meet the income requirements and are buying a home or even a condominium in Corvail, and it's not in the floodplain and you're income eligible, you do not need to be a first time home buyer.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions about that? Thank you, Lori, for bringing it up. I I meant to mention it earlier, and I I forgot about that.
Great. Well, I guess I'd like to speak to the time at hand, also the extremely troubling and disturbing and sad historic moments that were at the US Capitol. And these events were layered on top of a year that was found as us dealing with a pandemic and racial justices. You know, it's an explosive political environment and any number of personal issues. And to the residents of Corvail, my pledge as a city councillor And to the residents of Corahville, my pledge as a city councillor is to recognize and encourage common values of individual freedoms and to respect for human dignity. And I appreciate the work of overseeing the city such as ours and will not be distracted but will diligently navigate the tasks at hand. I also wanted to mention, maybe Megan, you could speak to the Veterans Memorial that was just announced, that the bricks are ready and available for people to purchase.
Yeah, actually, Sherry might be a better a better person to speak to that. I I missed the last meeting because I am at home making sure my kids are on their Zoom meetings and going to school at home. But there was just a committee meeting that's earlier this week, was it yesterday, right, Sherry?
Right, yes. Yep. So bricks, yes, brick forms are on the website, Corahville Memorial, corahvilleveteransmemorial.org, or you can get information off our Facebook page as well, Veterans Memorial in Corahville. And we have bricks three different sizes, and the sponsorship is 250, 350, or 450. And you can honor a veteran of of any age, of any anywhere they lived, of any war, of any of any conflict that they've been involved in, anything. It is not just it is in Corahville, but it's not just for for Corahville residents to be honored there at the Veterans Memorial. So brick forms are on there as well as sponsorship forms. If you have the ability to be a donor of a larger amount, we we have about $180,000 to raise to put in the medallions. The we have had about $75,000 worth of in-kind work from local businesses who've put together all of the foundations, and then the Veterans Memorial Committee has now done contracts and done the front wall. So we are really making great strides. We are about half done with it, and the the big next step is the large granite medallions that honor all six branches of the military.
I have a quick question about that, Sherry. Let's say if we have immigrant and they don't, you know, fight, they didn't fight in any of the war that the U.S. is is involved here or, you know, the World War I, World War II. Can can they buy a brick?
Sure, yeah, any any person who's served in the military can have a brick, and and you don't have to necessarily. If if you aren't a veteran, but you would like to buy a brick, we have what's called a tribute walkway, so paying tribute to those who have who are veterans also. So there's lots of different ways to be involved. All that information is on the website, and we'd love to love to talk to you.
Thank you.
Anything more, Lori?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, the order switched on my screen, and so I'll hand it to Jill. She's now the next one on there.
Thank you, Mayor. As the liaison for Parks and Rec, I wanted to say that I know that the commission will be very excited to help plan for this new amphitheater. We have started working on the Parks and Rec budget at our last meeting, and as we all have often said how great our staff is, I don't think we maybe give enough credit to the commissions that do this work. And my Parks and Rec Commission is outstanding and Sherry proud. I don't know how she wears as many hats as she does in leading all of us, but it is a pure joy to be able to work on this this particular commission with these individuals. It's quite an honor. Since I never can have a meeting without talking about COVID and wearing masks, I was very disappointed to find out that the state legislature does not have a state mask mandate. So I'm pretty sure confidence in county is wearing their masks, but I would hope that everyone would think of other people, especially during these difficult times. There's now currently 3,000 deaths per day in our country, which is one every second. This is not something to mess around with. So I hope that our leadership at the state level can step up a little bit and set a good example. And then, finally, I can't talk what anybody has said about what happened on the sixth. I think I've taken it, I know I've taken it, about what a peaceful transition of power So as all of the others, I will just pledge and ask everybody in our community to just be kind to one another. It doesn't matter your political affiliation, your color, your anything about yourself. It's it's a humanity issue. Please take care of each other, and let's just hope that we get through the inauguration with everyone staying safe. Thank you.
You, Jill? And Megan?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just was going to start by encouraging folks to check out the the Martin Luther King Day celebrations that it's not just happening on Martin Luther King Day, but but through all of next week, there's a lot of fantastic programming happening in Johnson County. There's virtual programming and and service projects. You can check out the Facebook page, Johnson County Dr. Martin Luther King Day Junior Celebration for a full list of the events that are that are happening in the community next week. I I am so happy to hear that we'll be that we are going to be hearing from Benny Hawkins next week. I I met Benny when I was door knocking, and I have never ever forgotten the the interaction that I had with him. He invited me inside, we we had a fantastic conversation, and he he, you know, even in that short interaction that I had with him, just shared so much wisdom and and so many experiences with me. So he he's just, we're so, so lucky to have him in our community, and I I can't wait to hear from him him next week. It'll be fantastic. And then finally, I just, you know, I'm like all of you, going through a lot of emotions based on the events of last week. I watched that attack play out, you know, with the mixture of just horror and and fear and and grief, you know? It's it, I have felt a tremendous amount of sadness, you know, watching that temple to democracy being desecrated the way it was. And, you know, and to Hi's point about, you know, watching it with your kids, you know, watching that unfold in it would be terrible, it's terrible for all of us, but it is especially terrible for those of us who have people of color in their lives that they care deeply about. It's, you know, you 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 view it with with fear. You fear for the people that you love, and 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 that is, you know, seeing the Confederate flag in the United States Capitol, just the the terror that that strikes in in in, you know, in our hearts is just, it's it's difficult to articulate. And I think one of the biggest lessons that I learned from from watching all of that was the lesson of leadership. And the oaths that we take are sacred, they are sacred oaths. And to see that there are so many in in the highest levels of government that don't understand the the sacred duty that that you have when you serve in public office is is that scary. And it it's, you know, it it makes me very, very, very angry to to see that. But having said all of that, it does make me grateful that locally we do have public servants that are honest, as the mayor said, that have integrity, that understand the the weight and the responsibility that we have as elected officials. And and so I agree, you know, my my work is is going to be focused on making sure that I fulfill my oath and serve my community with as much honesty and integrity and kindness and compassion and courage and wisdom as I can. You know, and I I do just want to close by saying that, you know, we we need to acknowledge the role that white supremacy played in in last week's attack. It and and it was clearly an act of of white supremacist rage. And there will, I don't think that we'll have genuine healing in this community until we deal with that original sin that this country has. And so, again, I am committed to to addressing that, to being a part of that solution. And even though, you know, we are taking the first steps in in addressing those issues in that community, I am so grateful that we are on that path because the smallest ripple will 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 go out and go far, and and it really does start here in in making our community better. That's how we're going to make the world a better place, just one community at a time. And I'm grateful for all of you, and I I look forward to to continuing the work with all of you. And and that is all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Megan. Again, well, wise words spoken by all members of the council. Thank you very much. With that, I would entertain a motion to to close the formal meeting, and then we'll move into a work session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Gross, seconded by?
Second.
By when? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.